I would ask that the following actions occur. At the beginning of our meetings, I will do a roll call for all attendants. Please identify that you are in the meeting. Please identify yourself before speaking at any time during the meeting. I will call roll votes for all votes and all discussions. I appreciate your cooperation as we move forward with this new process. Beth Campbell?
Here.
Sarah Ethier?
Yeah.
Frank Treglia? Matthew Van Ormer? Francine Koss?
Here.
Megan Campbell? Lucas Koval? Tyler Veronese? Tanya Galpin?
Here.
I apologize for the feedback. Steve Carr?
Here.
Anthony Kepler? Nathan Vera? Anthony, if you are online, can you please state so? We do not have him online. I'd ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into the regular business of our meeting, I would ask that we take a moment of silence for one of our students who recently passed away, Daniel Greco Jr. He will be missed in our community. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Steve Carr, vote to accept and approve the agenda dated June 9, 2025, as presented.
Nate Vera, second.
This is Matt Van Ormer. I motion to move Agenda Item 12, the Committee Reports, to Agenda Item 5, public particip- to above Agenda Item 5, Public Participation, and add the motion under Agenda Item 12.2.1 to approve the reduced cuts to the $25,000 to the 25, 2025, 2026 Thomaston Board of Education Operating Budget.
Vera, second.
Everything else is moving with it. We are adding that motion because we need to approve the amended budget. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. So we will go to our Committee Reports. And first up, we have our Achievement Committees. Excuse me. So the Achievement Ad-Hoc Committee met on May 29, 2025. And we were given presentations that you all received. If anyone has any questions, you could ask them now. Concerns regarding those presentations? Okay. Moving on, I will turn it over to Mr. Carr as the Treasurer for the Budget Audit Committee Report.
For the Budget Audit Committee, we're having Tracy.
Just a second, please. Steve, sorry. I moved too quickly.
Moved to?
I didn't speak up fast enough. I wanted to make sure that I brought the board's attention to where those reports are. So under the Superintendent's Report, under the Admin Reports, is where you will find what was reported on during the Achievement Committee. So you have the District Goals Reports from each of the schools and pupil services, as well as Curriculum, which offered information about both of our goals this year. Just wanted to point out where that was so that if you or the public wanted to find that information, it's right there on our agenda. Sidney? It's under Administrator Reports, 11.2.2. And then if you go down, it begins, we have our school climate report there too, but that was not reported out during Achievement Committee. It begins at 11.2.2.3. Those are the reports that were shared with us during the Achievement Committee meeting. Yes.
Steve Carr, reporting on the Budget Audit Committee. We met and we have, per the amending to the agenda, we have Tracy Decker. It will be speaking in regards to the cuts being made and the updates.
So as you know, the Board of Finance cut an additional $25,000 from the Board of Education line of the budget. I met with Mrs. Kingsbury on Friday, and her recommendation is to cut $25,000 from the high school budget. $5,000 from the CNA program, $15,000 from the post program. The Mrs. Rialano was able to renegotiate our cost for the post courses from $300, of course, to $150. So we saw $15,000 in savings there and $5,000 by eliminating the lunch monitor at the high school, which will be covered by the administrative staff. So that brings the Board of Ed budget to $18,134,512, which is a 2.52% increase from last year.
With that update, Steve Carr, vote to accept and approve the Business and Financial Report and Expenditures per Policy 3432, 3433, Business, Non-Instructional Operations, Budget and Expense Report, Annual Financial Statement, as presented for May 2025.
Nate Vera, second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Koss?
I just want to make a clarifying point. So the cut to the CNA program is not to eliminate the program. We have an opportunity with, at advance, to have the one student that would have been in that program to go and continue their courses in that direction. And then in the following year, we will repartner up with Cook Willow and another local district so that we can have a larger class of CNA students.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that large chunk, the 15,000, as a renegotiation, tremendous effort. So the town thanks her very much for that.
So just to be clear, for the public, we are voting on the Business Managers' Report for May. That is the motion on the table. That does not include the changes for the budget for the town. That's a separate motion. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Matt Van Ormer, I make a motion to approve the reduced cuts of $25,000 to the 2025 and 2026 Thomaston Board of Education budget, as presented.
Nate Vera, second.
Questions regarding these recommendations? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. That's Beth Campbell, opposed. Any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to the Policy Committee.
Mike Munser, work. So far, so good. All right, we had our policy meeting today at 5:00. We went over, Mr. Long has been presenting to us the changes to the Handbook in reference to grading policies and finals and midterm exams. They've had a committee of teachers and other employees in the school that have been working on the policy for months now. And so he presented it to us in the Achievement Committee meeting and then also at our last Policy Committee meeting. And then they've made altercations to the Student Handbook. Still working. So we're looking to move that to a discussion item at our next Board of Ed meeting. So feel free to come with any other questions. But the policy itself, or the procedure that he's putting in place is in the Student Handbook for our next school year. We also discussed our policy about political signs on school property. So we're also going to move that to a first reading next Board of Education meeting. And the premise of our current discussion is just eliminating political signs from school property. And we're working out the finer details in our current policy. And and then we'll move all of the discussion items for the next meeting to first reads. We didn't have any first reads. And then we'll move the relations with youth organizations to an action item next month. And then for this month, we have three action items. And I vote to accept and approve Policy 7230.2, as presented, which is graduation requirements.
Sorry, second.
That is the policy on indoor air quality. Just to be clarified, yes. Okay, any questions regarding that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Let's try graduation requirements next. I vote to accept and approve Policy 6146, Graduation Requirements, as presented.
Sorry, second.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Matt Van Ormer, I both accept and approve Policy 4316, Conduct on School Property Personnel, as presented.
Sorry, second.
I would just like to comment that we'd like to thank our BCBA, Lisa Lavoie, for bringing these policies forward. And here is the result of your hard work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Last but not least, vote to accept and approve Policy 5316, Conduct on School Property Students, as presented.
Steve Carr, second.
Again, a thank you to Lisa Lavoie for bringing this forward. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And I would just like to state that the reason we held these discussion items and moved them up on the agenda so that you, as the public sitting here tonight, which we have a great crowd, thank you all for attending, is to let you know that we have heard your concerns and we, as a board, are addressing them. So at this time, I would invite the public in accordance with Rules of Common Courtesies and the Bylaws of the Board, 9325 Meeting Conduct. Five minutes may be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 20 minutes to each subject matter. No boisterous conduct shall be permitted. Persistence in boisterous conduct shall be grounds for termination of that person's privilege to address the board. The chairperson may clear the room so that board members may continue the meeting. No oral presentation shall include charges, complaints against any Board of Education employee, regardless of whether or not the employee is identified by name. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by their comments. While it is not the board's intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, the speaker may be held legally responsible. Speakers unsure of the legal ramification of what they are about to say are urged to consult first with their legal advisor. Per the August 2016 Policy Committee meeting, responses to speakers will be in the form of a written letter from the chairperson of the Board of Ed, and that letter will be attached to the meeting minutes. Speakers will not receive a verbal reply to public comment during the meeting. Did anyone want to address the board?
Because I don't use it.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Beth Campbell, 21, Edwin Lane, parent of a high school senior. I just wanted to just let the board know that I'm highly disappointed with the outcome of the senior prank. And I feel like this was an opportunity for this class and the students who may not have been invited to any senior party, played sports, been in any type of clique or friend group where this whole class was going to do something, and it was a positive prank? They could have done a lot worse, and it could have been a really bad prank that you would have been very unhappy with. So I just want board to know that I am not pleased with the outcome. And I want to apologize to any of the seniors.
How's that? Okay. I'm Julie Ingham from 70 Elm Street in Thomaston. I'd like to first start off by thanking all the board members, whether we agree or not, for the dedication and time they put into this job. It's a six-year term. I was at the April meeting, and I left quarter 211, and they were just going into executive session. So hats off to them, plus all their subcommittees that they're on. And I also learned something new this week from Steve Carr that, and for you parents that would like to hear more participation, is that board members, as Beth just did, can speak if they speak as a resident. And I would encourage the board to do that because that's what parents want to hear. I think a lot of people haven't been coming because they think they won't hear from their board member. So I'm hoping that the board will, in the future, get up here a lot more, and I think maybe participation would increase. So sorry about that. During this budget process, you know, I've heard some elected officials, and I'm going back to even the original budget hearing, get on the defensive or get upset when there are concerns about salaries or whatever. I want to make this very clear. It's nothing about a person or an individual. It's about a- How's that?
Oh.
It's about a position. I'm sorry about that. It's just, okay. At the budget airing, residents did raise objections to salaries for BOE positions, along with certain town positions. And while some finance members listened to the public, others would not budge. Subsequently, you've seen the result. Two failed referendums. Well, we must give credit and thanks to those who serve in these capacities when they get to the point that they don't want to hear their constituents who pay the freight. It might be time to- I'm sorry. How about if they yell like this? It might be better.
Come on. It should forget talking.
Okay.
Yeah, if you talk there, you're good.
Is that okay now?
Yeah.
Okay. A BOE member stated on social media that the town screams, "They want better for our children", but are not understanding what it takes to accomplish that. And I disagree with that statement to a certain extent. Many residents and parents object to the salaries and benefits that have been negotiated for superintendent and central office staff. For a small district like ours, going it alone, we cannot sustain those, along with the increase-
Excuse me, Julie. You cannot name people in your statement.
I didn't name anybody. It's the position. Right? This is untenable in our small school district. I would like to see the process of non-union contracts decentralized in order to avoid inequities. When a secretarial position pays higher salary than teachers, town department heads, and is not in line with other clericals in our district, this is not acceptable. Attending the BOE meeting in April was certainly eye-opening for me, especially on the subject of non-renewals. And the only comment I'd like to make on that is that I encourage the board to see if there's a fairer way to treat young teachers attempting to start their careers. In our small town, we need to look at the entire budget on both sides, the town side and the education side. Speaking to a Thomaston teacher recently, it was heartwarming to hear that because the district is so small, it's a pleasure working here and worth not working in a larger district where they might make more money. There's a definite benefit to working in a small district. And I would like to, while our superintendent's great, we can't afford the rate of pay. And I'm just hoping the board takes that into serious consideration tonight. Thank you.
Tackler. Oh. Your wife thought you were coming up, Bert. Nope.
Good evening, everyone. I'm getting there, man. Madam Chair Finer, fellow board members, everyone listening both here and at home, thank you for your time. My name is Nate Vera. My address is 131 Thomaston Circle, and I am a member of the Board of Education. But tonight, I speak to you as a fellow Thomaston resident. Let me start by saying it would be an understatement to say this month has been unprecedented. As many of you know, the second referendum, held just a few weeks ago, failed by a whopping two votes with only 9% turnout. This has resulted in another round of Board of Education cuts, which now sit at a total of $50,000. While the next referendum is on June 18, and I encourage you all to show up and vote yes, I'm not willing to gamble the future of our students in a referendum where under 10% of our town participates. Words, thoughts, and prayers from this podium cannot simply be enough. Now needs to be a time for action. Make no mistake, the iron grip of the state is only going to get tighter. The list of demands from the one-party establishment that runs Connecticut is only going to get longer. And our towns are not just being ignored, but screwed over and left behind by Hartford. They can't find our town on a map, let alone pretend to care about us. Instead of actually keeping their promise of funding special education, they give us unfunded mandates. Instead of greater matching in grant funding, they're cutting it back. And instead of providing our towns more assistance and flexibility, they'd only like to force more top-down control. The last thing we can rely on is Hartford gaining common sense. So we have to be proactive, prepare for referendums for years to come. A mechanism must be built for this and future referendums to drive out the vote and prevent further cuts to services that Thomaston students, families, and residents rely on. And I, for one, am done waiting. It's time for me to put my money where my mouth is. So please take out your phones and get ready to take down some important information. In order to take, in order to build this mechanism for years to come, by identifying voters, building a roster of volunteers, and providing information on the ramifications should this next referendum fail, this Saturday, June 14, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., I will be hosting a Get Out the Vote workshop at American Legion Post 22 on 211 Elm Street. As a matter of fact, if you can't make it on Saturday and you still want to help, I am willing to publicly dox myself. You can contact me directly and learn how you can help by texting or calling my cellphone at 203-805-9263. Again, that is 205-203-805-9263.
I'm going to be happy, Michael.
I know you do that. You text me frequently. This is nothing short of a call to action. But this can't be done alone. For that reason, I call on our amazing PTA. I call on our dedicated parents. I call on our amazing teachers and our devoted staff. I call on our elected officials, appointed commissioners, and of course, our loving community. I call on all those who are ready to pass this budget to come together, form a coalition of the willing, to see this through, because enough is enough. The buck stops here, and I, for one, refuse to stand by and let the school district that made me into everything I am go through this any longer. Regardless of any other disagreements we may have tonight, and I'm sure there will be many, we should be able to come together behind that. Let's bring it home and get this done. Thank you.
Were there any other members of the public wanted to address the board? Thank you to all our speakers. Moving forward, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Steve Carr, vote to accept and approve the regular minutes meeting, meeting minutes dated May 12, 2025, as presented.
For a second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
If I could have a quick-
Anthony, can you hear us?
He has to unmute himself, Nathan. There he is.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so you need to respond when- when we are done taking the vote here, so I can clearly hear you going forward in our votes. Thank you.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the special meeting minutes dated May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Nate Vera, second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Minutes dated May twenty first, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Moving into the recognitions for this evening, we have our May Rotary Student of the Month, Emma DeRozers.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank Rotary for this recognition. I am honored. I would also like to thank Ms. Kingsbury and Mr. Becca for all they've allowed me to do in my high school career. Lastly, I'd like to thank my family for their unwavering support throughout my high school career, including all its highs and lows. Being a part of Thomiston's small, closed community, I've been able to create bonds with teachers, mentors, and even children. Starting from around the age of twelve, I started to recognize that I had stress induced anxiety. This occurs when a heavy amount of stress leads to constant worry or fear. My anxiety has stopped me from doing multiple things in my life because the anxiety and not logic took over how I felt and what I thought. I began to feel like I wasn't even myself anymore. Being a citizen of Thomiston, I couldn't have asked for a better support system. The guidance counselors being there anytime I have an anxiety attack, teachers to walk me through anything that could possibly spark an attack, and even being allowed opportunities to distract me from my anxiety. This past semester, I was given the opportunity to make my senior capsule whatever I was passionate about. I thought it only made sense to make it related to my anxiety. After some thinking, I decided to create a workshop with licensed therapist Nicole Mayo-Gow to talk about coping mechanisms for anxiety. The process opened up my eyes that many people suffer with some range of anxiety. I came to the realization that nobody should have to deal with anxiety alone. Everyone who struggles with anxiety should be heard. One of my highlights of my high school career has been volunteering. I volunteered as an assistant coach to the local U twelve girls competitive soccer team for four years, who just happened to be division champs three years. I don't think that's a coincidence. I mentored at the elementary school for all four years of high school. It was participating in these volunteering programs. I knew I wanted to become a role model for the youth in some way and become a support system for children in the same way Thomiston has been my support system. Thomiston High School allowed me the opportunity to determine if possibly teaching was a path for me by coordinating with elementary Black Rock to participate in a volunteer work internship. I was able to visit and participate in second grade as well as pre K. As a result, I will start Curry College in the fall, majoring in their four plus one elementary education program. I feel that I'm off to a great post-high school career, and THS and the Thomiston community played a hard, a large role as to why. Thank you so much for recognizing me as May of Rotary Student of the Month.
So that was a clip of the speech that Emma gave at her Rotary Student Luncheon back in May. For the Students of the Month in May, we have Emma DeRozers, Madison Lund, Haley Morton, Violet Alvi, Tess Harkness, Kyla Leahy, Vivian Porter, Rocco Rinaldi, Grace Thibault, Haley Peck, Aurora Pelletier, Leah Campanale, Veda Blakesley, and Savannah Wenzloff. Let me congratulate them. The June Rotary Student of the Month is our own board representative, Megan Campbell.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Megan Campbell, and I'm truly honored honored and grateful to be here today. I want to begin by sincerely thanking the Rotary Club for this incredible recognition. Being named Student of the Month means so much more to me than just an award, but as a reflection of hard work, growth, and support I've experienced throughout my journey. When I read Rotary's mission to provide service to others, promote integrity, and advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace, I really connected with it. These values reflect a lot of what I've learned on my own journey, both in and out of school. When I was seventh grade, I started reading at a fourth grade level and had been diagnosed with dyslexia. It was tough. I struggled with reading and often anxious about school and what my future might look like. But with determination and the support of my amazing teachers and academic resources, I kept pushing forward. Even teachers from other districts volunteered their time to help and tutor me. And that kind of encouragement has stayed with me and inspired me. It wasn't easy, but I showed up, worked hard, and stayed committed to improving. Growing up in Thomiston has played a big part in my story. This is a small town, but it is filled with big parts. My family has lived here for generations, and volunteering has always been a part of our lives. I grew up watching relatives give their time to help others, and that has inspired me to do the same. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Fourth of July Children's Parade Committee and serve on cruise control at the Thomiston Car Show. And I mentor younger students at Black Rock Elementary School. Throughout all four years of my high school, I've been active on student council, serving in different roles. And I'm currently representing my school as one of the student members on the Board of Education. I have been a part of my church's youth group and now serve as a student leader as well. All these experiences have helped me feel more connected to my community and have taught me how to, how important it is to step up, lead, and serve. I've learned the importance of consistency, perseverance, and showing up even when things are hard. Looking ahead, my goal is to make a difference in lives of children by becoming a school psychologist with a strong foundation in teaching children. In the fall, I will be attending Western New England University with a dual major in elementary education and psychology. I want to help kids grow, not just academically, but emotionally and socially too. I would like to thank my parents, Ms. Kingsbury, Ms. Dayton, Ms. Stowe, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Cost for all their support and encouragement over my high school years. And a special thank you to my academic support teachers, Ms. Rodericki and Ms. Dumis. Thank you again for this recognition. It means so much to me, and I hope to carry forward the spirit of service and leadership that the Rotary Club stands for.
Megan was honored at the Rotary Luncheon last Thursday, and she was also a part of the Student of the Month breakfast that happened on Friday. So in addition to Megan, for the June Students of the Month are Samantha D'Orlini, Christina Spina, Carmelo Segui, Adriana Fonte, Benjamin Pram, Trinidad Smolkas, Christian Papas, Jordan Thornton, Victoria Severino, Zachary Schoenard, Nora Hennessy, Reagan Fair, and Louis Rodriguez. Congratulations. So we have a shout out to the Alyssa O'Brien and the Thomiston High School Student Council, the winners of the twenty twenty-five Challenge to Educational Citizenship Award. Each year, the Connecticut State Student Advisory Council on Education, in collaboration with the Commissioner of Education, presents the Challenge to Educational Citizenship Award to school programs that promote civic awareness, service to others, and responsible citizenship. This year, Thomiston High School has been named a statewide winner of the twenty twenty-five Challenge to Educational Citizenship Award for its outstanding project, THS Student Council Lock-in Twenty Twenty-Five. This initiative was not only creative and student driven, but it also reflected a strong commitment to fostering school spirit, community engagement, and leadership among our students. We are especially proud to recognize Alyssa O'Brien, a grade eleven student, who took the initiative to submit the nomination paperwork to the Connecticut Association of Schools. Her leadership and follow through made this recognition possible. On June third, twenty twenty-five, representatives from Thomiston High School attended the awards ceremony at the Connecticut Association of Schools headquarters in Cheshire, where they received a plaque honoring this achievement. Please join me in congratulating Alyssa O'Brien, Mrs. Franzi, and the members of the Thomiston High School Student Council for bringing this honor to our district and for demonstrating what it means to be responsible and engaged citizens. We are incredibly proud of you. So our next shout out is for our TCS Task Force, Leave It Better. The TCS Task Force is a dedicated team of motivated, respectful, and hardworking students committed to serving the Thomiston school community and the town of Thomiston. Our goal is simple yet powerful, to leave it better by performing quality work and lifting the spirits of those around us through service. Our student volunteers provide invaluable hands-on deck support through a wide range of tasks, including but not limited to designing and assembling bulletin boards, organizing classroom libraries, cleaning desks, tables, stairways, and more, creating over three hundred Easter cards for citizens with special needs, participating in the THS Harvest Pack event to fight food insecurity, building a parade float for Thomiston's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration, raking leaves, spreading mulch, weeding and watering school gardens, picking up litter in and around school grounds and public areas, supporting various tasks at Town Hall and the Thomiston Opera House, assisting teachers at Black Rock School and Center School with classroom setup, washing Thomiston ambulances to support our local first responders. The TCS Task Force exemplifies the spirit of community engagement and responsibility. Through these efforts, our students gain valuable life skills while making a meaningful difference in the places they live in learned. Congratulations to our THF Task. If any of the members of our task force are here, why don't they come on up and have a photo opportunity? Congratulations.
Francine Koss, I want to make a comment about the teacher that started the task force. This was an organic program that she started, Mrs. Olson, at Center School. She started it several years ago with the fifth grade. The fifth graders then loved being on the task force so much that another tier of the task force was created for the sixth grade. And that group of students hit the ground running when they got here to the high school, seventh graders requesting from the administration an expansion of a club that does similar things to what the task force does, which is our interact club. So Mrs. Kingsbury opened up the interact club to grades seven and eight. And the work that they have done has been amazing. Most recently, fulfilling an order of over twenty thousand meals ready to eat for Harvest Pack, which is a nationwide nationwide organization that feeds the hungry. And that was, there was at least a table and a half there of our task force, and they did an amazing job. So this is something that is organic to Thomiston and thanks to Mrs. Olson over at Center School.
We are proud to recognize several of our talented Thomiston High School students who were nominated for the twenty twenty-five Halo Awards, the largest high school theater awards program in the state of Connecticut. The Halo Awards, created by artistic director Samina de Laurentis in nineteen ninety-three and presented by Seven Angels Theater, celebrate student excellence in all areas of high school theater, from acting and directing to technical design and backstage crew. What began with eight schools in the Greater Waterbury area has now grown into a prestigious four night event held at the Palace Theater in downtown Waterbury, with nearly ninety high schools from across Connecticut participating. We are thrilled to share that Thomiston High School received five nominations this year for their spring production of Grease. Congratulations to the following students and teams. Christina Spina, Best Performance in a Featured Female Role in a Musical for her role as Jan. Brianna Mail, Best Hair and or Makeup Design in or Execution for her work on Grease. The Run Crew, Run Crew for Grease, excuse me, Best Running Crew. Aiden Delaney, Best Stage Management, a Stage Manager for Grease. And Matthew Pellino, Best Performance in a Leading Male Role in a Classic Musical for his role as Danny Zuko. These nominations not only reflect the talent and dedication of our students, but also the outstanding guidance and support they receive from Brianna Riolano, Drama Club Director, and Owen McGowan, Musical Director, as well as the many staff members and volunteers who contributed behind the scenes. We also extend our appreciation to our community partners at Landmark Theater, also known as the Thomiston Opera House, for their continued collaboration and support. We are incredibly proud of everyone involved and wish our nominees the best of luck. Aiden Delaney earned the Halo Award for his stage direction in Grease. Congratulations to Aiden. We'd like to give a shout out to all of our seniors, the class of twenty twenty-five graduates. We wish you all well in your future endeavors, and we know you will be a bear for life. Congratulations. At this time, we would like to formally thank our outgoing student representative, Megan Campbell. Come on up for a picture, Megan. Megan has been conscientiously serving with dedication for the past two years, and we appreciate her hard work and know that she will succeed as she heads off to Western New England State. Good luck, Megan. We'd also like to give a big shout out to our audio visual representative, Mackenzie.
Someone takes a bow from behind that curtain.
We appreciate everything you do, and the feedback from the microphones is not her fault, so. Thank you. So we are honored this evening to have our Cabe, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, Studiouship, Student Leadership Board recipients here this evening. Our first recipient is Emily Mazzarella from our eighth grade. Emily is an eighth grader at THS who has made a name for herself with only two years under her belt. Emily has outstanding academic success in all the classes, striving to do her best at every task. Emily is part of the advanced math program and hopes to become part of more higher education opportunities. Along with schoolwork, Emily devotes her time to cross country softball interact club, and most notably, the THS Drama Club. She will be taking the healthcare pathway through the CCA program beginning next year. Emily cannot wait to pave herself a path through her future journey as a high schooler. Our next recipient, also from eighth grade, is Carter E. Gier. Carter has lived in Thomiston his whole life. He is a well-rounded young individual and puts a lot of effort into his work. He participates in three sports for Thomiston Middle School and travel teams. He plays. He plays soccer, baseball, and basketball. Carter helps out with Thomaston Little League with working in the snack shed. Carter is in LIS Science Club and Interact, helping with pennies for polio. He was top seven in the Invention Convention in 2023. In class, he is a self-advocator, and if he needs help or is struggling, he gets the helps he needs to accomplish goals. Also is a diligent student and completes his work on time. He brings a positive outlook into the classroom environment and has been on the honor roll numerous times over the years. He is a responsible student in class and works well with classmates. Carter takes pride in his education and takes it extremely seriously. Congratulations. Our next recipient from grade twelve is Emily Morton. Growing up in Thomaston, Emily has always been a crucial part of her class, whether that be with academics or extracurricular activities. Since the seventh grade, she has been on the honor roll. She constantly is striving to have her work be the best it can be. Since sophomore year, Emily has been a part of Thomaston Science and Engineering Design Cohort, where she has completed her own research project. Her research is about using Fucus Vesicolausus, a brown algae, I goofed it up magically, extract as a bio-stimulant for radish plant growth. In this cohort, Emily was tasked with finding a scientific advisor, which hers is Professor Isabella McCollough from the Rokraw University of Science and Technology in Poland. Outside of the classroom, Emily is able to balance multiple clubs and sports. She has been the class of 2025 Vice President for the last four years and was elected as the Student Council President this year. She continues her student leadership at state level as she is the Western District Coordinator for the Connecticut Association of Student Council's Executive Board. She also holds officer roles and is an active member of the National Honor Society Catering Club and Science Club here at the high school. Emily was named captain of the varsity field hockey team in the fall and is a role model for young dancers at Reach for the Stars Academy of Dance. Her leadership does not stop there. She was also a top ten finalist for the Connecticut Student Board of Education Representative. As her high school career comes to an end, Emily will be starting her next chapter at the University of Rhode Island this fall, where she will be in the honors program and studying medical laboratory science. Congratulations. And our other award winner is Erty Shreptke from grade twelve. Erty is a senior at Thomaston High School and will graduate later this week. Along with this, he will also be obtaining an associate degree in legal studies from post-university this same summer. For his leadership, Erty has been class president for the past four years and captain the cross-country and track and field teams in his senior year. On top of this, he is also the Vice President of Student Council and is the reporter for the National Honor Society. Academically, Erty has taken multiple advanced placement classes, such as AP Calculus and AP Chemistry. And next year, he will be studying chemical engineering at UCOM. All in all, he is dedicated and strives for the best in everything he does in and out of the classroom. Congratulations. And our staff spotlight this month is Tracy Decker, the Business Manager of Thomaston Public Schools. Dear Chairperson Finer, I am honored to nominate Ms. Tracy Decker, Business Manager of Thomaston Public Schools, for this month's Staff Spotlight. Ms. Decker's unwavering dedication and exceptional contributions have been instrumental in advancing our district's mission and ensuring fiscal responsibility. In her role as Business Manager, Ms. Decker oversees the preparation and presentation of comprehensive monthly business and financial reports to the Board of Education, providing transparency and facilitating informed decision-making. Her meticulous attention to detail and commitment to accuracy have been invaluable assets to our financial operations. Beyond her responsibilities within the school district, Ms. Decker serves as the Finance Director for the Town of Thomaston, where she plays a pivotal role in managing the town's financial affairs. Her dual roles exemplify her exceptional capacity to balance complex financial responsibilities across multiple entities. Ms. Decker's involvement extends to key committees, including the Capital Improvement Committee and the Safety Committee, where she contributes her expertise to long-term planning and the well-being of our community. Her collaborative approach and strategic insights have significantly influenced the success of these initiatives. Furthermore, Ms. Decker is an active member of the Board of Education's Budget Audit Committee, working along board members to ensure fiscal accountability and transparency. Her contributions have been critical in maintaining the financial health of our district. In recognition of her outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to excellence, I wholeheartedly recommend Ms. Tracy Decker for the Staff Spotlights. Her contributions have had a profound impact on our schools and the broader Thomaston community. And this was submitted by Mrs. Koss, Superintendent of Schools. I thank all of you with younger children for attending our meeting tonight, but do understand that it is almost the last night of school, but you do have a few more days. So if you'd like to leave the meeting now, please feel free to do so. Okay, so, per the board request, we have no presentations this month, which means we will move right into our student representatives' report.
All right. While the end of the year may be around the corner, academically, Thomaston Schools as a district is still preparing students to model the image of a graduate. On June first, Thomaston Center School visited the public library. And on June third, Thomaston Center School had their Grade Four State Fair. June fourth marked Thomaston Center School's district Step Up Day in which students from sixth grade came to the high school to meet their prospective teachers. On June fifth, Grade Fourth attended a field trip to Mystic Seaport. And on June sixth, Thomaston Center School held their Grade Six End-of-Year Celebration. Outside of special academic events, classes are continuing till the close of the year in their usual stride.
For clubs in the month of June, all clubs have had their end-of-year activities and events, although Student Council helped out with Step Up Day, leading the sixth graders around the school to their classes. Student Council also helped prepare, is going to also help prepare the food for after-graduation get-together on the back patio, hopefully. And don't forget that all clubs next year will be looking for new members to join.
In June, there were no athletic events other than the BL Banquet, which was invitation-only. On the fifth, as well as middle school and high school sports awards on June ninth, which took place in the CAF at 5:00 p.m. Outdoor Track had their final meet on the 21st of April. This was the BL Festival in which athletes competed in the decathlon, heptathlon, steeplechase, and hammer throw. Girls' varsity softball had their final game on the 23rd of April. Baseball had their final game on the 21st. And boys tennis had their final game on the 20th. And finally, girls tennis had their final game on the 22nd of April.
For special events in the month of June, the last All-Star Assembly for the school was on June second. Scholarship Night for Grade Twelve was on Tuesday, June third, from six to eight. Senior Step Out Day was on Wednesday, June fourth, from 8:50 to 1:00 p.m. Seniors went to Thomaston Bowling Lanes and then back to the school for a picnic outside, while underclassmen were having their Step Up Day. Senior Night, that was for only seniors, was also on Wednesday, June fourth. There was a BL Banquet on Thursday, June fifth. The Superintendent's Student of the Month Breakfast was on Friday, June sixth. The junior class field trip to Hammond Estate Park was on Friday, June sixth. The Spring Concert was on Friday, June sixth as well. And lastly, graduation is on June 10th at 7:00 p.m.
Is that a relief to have the be the last one, Megan? Okay, moving into the Chairperson's report. We have our progress report on the twenty-four, twenty-five goals as presented. Tanya, did you want to do a shameless plug for the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary?
My eight hundred and twenty-first, no, shameless plug of the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We have our parade coming June 28th kicks off at 12:00. For student volunteers to help. And then anybody that would like to help, they can reach out to... They can reach out to the committee and help at any capacity. We need help at Sanford Field, we have a boot truck festival over there for cleanup, for setup, anything like that. Also, July 12th is Family Fun Day at Nice Drones. We'd like kids to come and participate by running events, their fun kid events. So please reach out if you would like your child or if you would like to help. I will be giving hours of service, and I know you all need volunteer hours. Thank you. I know some students have already reached out, and I've already, they've already given time, so I wrote letters already, so.
Next on our agenda is to approve the results of our board evaluation and the superintendent evaluation. Oops, I'm sorry. I neglected to mention that the response to public comments are attached there under my report, as they are every month when we have public comment. Next up is the the approval of the results of our self-evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation, which we did last month. As you can see, the board scored 3.87 out of five, and the superintendent scored 3.81 out of four. So can I have a motion to approve those?
Steve Carr, vote to formally approve the finalized results of the 2024-2025 Board of Education Self-Evaluation and the 2024-2025 Superintendent Evaluation as complete during the executive session of the May 12th, 2025 regular meeting.
Nate Beer, a second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. Moving on. All of you should have a ballot in front of you. And this ballot is to appoint one member of the board to join the PDEC Committee. As we have three people interested in becoming a member of this committee, we are going to take a vote. So if you could take a moment to mark your ballots, and then I shall come around and collect them.
Explain what that is.
That is, if you recall during our Achievement Committee meeting, the PDEC is the Professional Development Committee that is established by the school district. And they are looking for a board member to participate so that we are aware of the hard work they are doing. Did anybody want to make a speech regarding their nomination?
I would just like to say...
There we go. I would just like to state, I would like to take my name out of consideration. When I put my name in over email, I didn't know who else was going to put their name forward. And you have two board members I think would be right on there. And, yeah. That was part of my concern why I put my name forward, because there weren't too many people on that meeting. And want to make sure someone was on there, because it's really important.
I, uh, I second Nate's...
Just don't mark me.
Seeing that, uh, no, I also myself, I...
Matt Van Ormer, I vote to approve the appointment of Tanya Galpin as the one Board of Ed member to join the PDEC Committee.
Here, a second.
All those in favor? Thank you, thank you all for your interest and for your willingness to step back, gentlemen. Okay, at this time, we have the swearing-in of the 2025-2026 student representatives. So Mr. Hungerford, if you would join Mr. Koval and Mr. Varanisi on the stage, please. So we welcome Mr. Hungerford to the stage. Okay, if I could have a motion to approve superintendent monthly reports?
Steve Carr, vote to accept or approve the superintendent of schools' submission of monthly report to support her progress in reaching the measurable areas of responsibility per Policy 2400 for the action taken by the Board of Education during the December 9th and 2024 regular meeting.
Nate Beer, a second.
Anyone have any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain.
Steve Carr, vote to... Discuss. Carr, vote to continue the superintendent of schools' monthly reports in 2025 to 2026.
Nate Beer, a second.
Okay, just as a reminder and for informational purposes for members of the public who may not know, the Board of Education revamped the evaluation tool that we use to evaluate the Superintendent of Schools. And it was not a finished document until, I believe, we approved it in December. And at that time, we asked that for the shortened term of this school year, the superintendent provide us with, um, monthly reports regarding her responsibilities per Policy 2400. And these reports were, um, provided to us and we got bonus reports every month as well. So not only did we get one, but we got two and sometimes even three reports during the month. So now that we have this new tool in place and we will have the full year of, um, time for the evaluation, we as a board need to decide if we would like to continue to receive those reports monthly or if we are going to, um, evaluate the superintendent, uh, based on the goals and the evaluation. Comments, discussion?
If this microphone will let me, um, I, I would just like to state, um, that I think we should discontinue, uh, the Superintendent of Schools' monthly reports as to how they're concerned with the evaluation process, just as, um, our, Steve, our, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Roxy Finer stated, we did it because we were implementing that rubric. That rubric has been fully implemented for next year. It would be, um, for the full span. So I don't think it is necessary anymore.
Steve Carr, I would consider it continuing because it kind of fits the model as far as what's a measurable act that she contributes. And it's, it was one of the things that was voted on as far as, you know, being able to have measurable acts to be able to give the score that we did without, uh, without uh, argument. And it, that's, that's kind of one of the things that was decided that board members wanted as a, a show of what she actually does to, to be measurable.
I, I would also just say to counter that point, if I may, Steve, as my Facebook warrior buddy, um, that we're, we still get, um, reports from the superintendent every month talking about the, the annual goals more, which we're going to be setting later tonight. We're still going to get progress on those because even before we made the system, we were still getting those updates. They weren't, they just were not tailored in this fashion to where, uh, Superintendent Cos is sitting and writing these extremely long emails. And I think as board members, we have gotten an understanding of, um, the criteria in the rubric as a new rubric when we set up it. And they, we all understand. During the last rubric and just to give everyone, uh, listening here at home some perspective, the last, the last, uh, rubric that we had was absolutely ridiculous. We, it was absolutely confusing. You could agree with one part of a paragraph, disagree with another part of a paragraph, and you still had to blur out a certain number. It wasn't fair to Superintendent Cos. It wasn't fair, um, to the board members that had to make the very tough decisions and then own up to a certain part of a paragraph, not the other part of a paragraph. This, um, this, um, right, the, the new rubric and criteria that we use now, it's a lot more streamlined, a lot more to the point. And I think this time there were still a few rough edges, but nothing even close to the things that we highlighted last year.
Up to the rest of the discussion, I can.
Uh, Sarah Ether, I agree with you, Nate. Um, I feel like it's redundant and, um, some of the topics, you know, we did need to go into that thorough detail. Make it a sort of, or something like that, so I agree with you.
Tanya Galpin, I also agree with you, Nate. I think like she gives updates, says the same thing as those that she's, she's giving us the same information in her updates monthly that she was giving us there, so.
Uh, did anybody else want to comment? And Beth, you are right, we do get weekly updates. It's not just monthly, yes.
We start discussion. We start discussion open.
Right. Um, if we start discussion open, I'd just like to say the motion on the floor is to continue. So if we vote yes, they will continue. If we vote no, they end. Just want to make a point. So we don't have to amend the motion.
Writing that clarification. I will call the vote. All those in favor of continuing the monthly reports? All those opposed? Aye, abstain? Okay. So that motion failed, which means that the superintendent will not be submitting monthly reports regarding her progress. Yes. Yep. And the last item on my report is the Senior Prank Investigation Report. This is the summary of an investigation into the issues surrounding the senior prank incident, which took place on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. In order to collect the information, the chairperson of the Thomiston Board of Education solicited written statements from the parties involved. These statements all covered the issues addressed below. The initial complaint came in at 7:09 from a parent who was concerned because the front parking lot at Thomiston High School was not accessible. The Thomiston Parent Student Handbook states, "A student may drive to school provided the student obtained, abides by the traffic rules." "Students who plan to drive to school must obtain a parking permit for the school year." "Parking permit application may be obtained by reporting to the main office." "The cost of the parking permit is $10." "Students will be assigned a numbered parking space." "Students who have a vehicle on campus during regular school hours must park in their assigned space." "Statements received from the Thomiston High School Administrator, the superintendent, and a student all agree that students were blocking the entrance to the assigned student parking area." "The senior class does not have the right or authority to try and stop other students from parking in their assigned and paid-for spa." "This blockage created an immediate threat to the safety of all students due to the disruption of the normal and permitted traffic flow as all members of the school community arrive to begin their day." "The blockage also prevented students from following agreed-upon school regulations." "The administrator on campus at the time of this event quickly rectified this situation and the day continued." "The second issue raised was the ability of the senior class to grill food in the parking lot." "The administrator states that while handling the traffic issue, he reminded the students that they were not allowed to grill." "Upon hearing that the administrator would not allow grilling, a student called her father, who is a member of the Thomiston Volunteer Fire Department, to find out who to contact to get permission to grill." "Unable to reach the Thomiston Fire Marshal or Assistant Fire Marshal, the volunteer fireman and the assistant chief of the Fire Department decided to go to the school to sign off on any issues with the Fire Department that the administration have." "The administration did not have any issues with the Fire Department." "Grilling was not to occur because of district insurance policies." "The evidence confirms that the interaction with the Fire Department representatives was initiated by a student whose father is a member of the Thomiston Volunteer Fire Department." "The Fire Department representatives arrive at the high school lot at approximately 7:40 a.m." "Upon arrival, both representatives went into the parking lot where the senior class had set up." "Upon glancing out her window, the superintendent saw the fire chief truck and wondered why the Fire Department was at the school." "As she has been instructed to do, she reached out to the Fire Marshal, a member of the Thomiston Districtwide Safety Committee and is a designated non-emergency contact person for the district." "She did not receive an answer to her call." "The superintendent then went to the main entrance of the school where she was met by the administrator and the Fire Department representatives." "The Fire Department representatives said that the grilling setup was safe and that the students could grill." "The administrator, with the support of the superintendent, said that while safety is always a concern, the reason students were not allowed to grill on school property is because grilling is against the district insurance policy regulations." "The fire representatives both deferred to this decision and went with the administrator and the superintendent to tell the students that grilling was not allowed." "While we appreciate the work of the Fire Department, they have no jurisdiction to allow anything to happen on school grounds if the superintendent, acting on behalf of the Board of Education, does not allow that to happen." "The third issue raised was the complaints of threats to revoke scholarship awards." "Thomiston Board of Education Policy 5113, Attendance Excuses Dismissal states in part, 'A student is considered to be in attendance if present at his/her assigned school or an activity approved by the school, for example, a field trip, for at least half of the regular school day.'" "Students are aware that if they are not in school for the required amount of the day, they cannot attend or participate in after-school functions." "The following parent square message was sent. Senior Notification Regarding Today's Attendance." "This was sent by the principal of Thomiston High School Tuesday morning at 8:56 a.m. to the 12th grade students only." "Dear Parents and Students, this message is to inform you that today is a regularly scheduled school day for all students. If your child is absent, it is unexcused unless Mrs. Thomas receives documentation to support your child's absence. If your child is scheduled to receive a scholarship this evening and is not in attendance for school, he or she will not be able to attend the scholarship event. Please encourage your child to remain in school today so that we can celebrate their academic achievements tonight." "It is signed by Mrs. Kingsbury dated Tuesday, June 3rd at 9:02 a.m. Clarifications: Seniors must be in school for at least half a day in order for their attendance to count for today." "This parent square message reiterates the district attendance policy and clearly rebuts the claims that scholarship awards were threatened. This is the only communication from the district received by one of the students who claimed that scholarships were going to be revoked. Scholarships are awarded from community organizations outside of the school district. No Thomiston district employee can revoke any scholarship offered. The claims that this was mentioned are unsubstantiated." "The final issue raised is the complaints and statements made by members of the Thomiston Board of Education. Policy 9010 states, 'The Board of Education is the unit of authority. Apart from their function as part of the unit, board members have no individual authority. Individually, the board member may not commit the district to any policy, act, or expenditure. The board member does not represent a factional segment of the community, but is rather a part of the body which represents and acts for the community as a whole. No individual member of the board, by virtue of holding office, shall exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the schools nor as an individual command the services of any school employee.'" "Additionally, Policy 9000, Roles of the Board and Member, Powers, Purposes, Duties states, 'The Board of Education is the governing body of the school district and derives its power and exists under the Constitution and general statutes of the State of Connecticut and the procedures of the Connecticut State Board of Education.'" "Board Duties: The Board of Education's basic duties shall include, 'Employee Enable and Qualified Superintendent of Schools, 'Adopt Policies to Govern the Operation of the School System, 'Adopt an Annual Budget, 'Communicate the Educational Program to the People of the Community, 'Keep Abreast of Future Educational Needs of the Town as well as the present, 'and take such specific actions as required by law.'" "Per Contract, the Superintendent of Schools is the Chief Executive Officer of the Board. In harmony with the policies of the Board, state statutes, and state regulations, the superintendent has executive authority over the school system and the responsibility for its supervision. In assisting the administrator by protecting the students and the policies of the district, the superintendent exercised her duties to the Board and the community. No individual on the Board has the authority to involve himself or herself in the daily management of the district or events occurring in the district. We, as board members, must be careful when sharing our individual opinions related to the district and people employed by the district. Comments and posts on social medias and emails sent by individual board members can be construed by members of the public as comments and posts and emails sanctioned by the Board. They are not. This type of behavior by individual board members can have serious legal consequences for the district. It is therefore important for each of us to act appropriately when making comments in public and in what we write when we have a question regarding an issue that has occurred in the district. We must demonstrate proper decorum and respect and not engage in conduct or language that can be harmful to the district. The only comments authorized by the Board are based on discussions between the full Board at lawfully called meetings that are issued by the Board as a result of our meetings. In conclusion, based on the evidence reviewed, the issues investigated are proven to be unsubstantiated. When you consider the three main issues in this incident, the traffic violations, the grilling of food on school property, and the alleged revoking of scholarships, I find that all Thomiston district prescribed policies and procedures were properly followed and enacted." Regarding the report, but you cannot make any comments regarding any personnel mentioned in this report. If you would like to do that, we have to table this and take it up at a future meeting. Our attorneys are reviewing to see whether that is going to be possible. I was putting policies regarding the Board's roles and responsibilities and their duties as board members to remind us all and the public of what our duties and responsibilities are. Any other questions regarding the report? As long as you don't mention anything or anybody by name.
Okay, um, well, I feel neither accredited nor that it's appropriate for me to speak on any of the legal matters. Um, I just personally wanted to make a comment about the parking lot itself and like how it prevented the ability of the students to access it. Um, it's a small amount of students and I don't know exactly what like the stipulations of it or the legalities of it are once again, but there's a lot of extra room in the back. And it was made aware to me that the front wouldn't be accessible by the senior class. And obviously that, um, right wasn't given to every student. Um, but even so, it was, mm, it wasn't out of, it didn't have to make me go out of my way, it didn't make me late to, late to class in any way, shape, or form. And especially considering that the back doors were open, I, I think it's until 7:15 they're open until, um, but yeah, I just thought that little bit of student insight on would be a little bit, um, well considered.
Just to go.
Just to go.
Which prank are you referring to? They can have a picnic in the front parking lot without grilling. I don't know when they've done it in the past, but we are following. I was unaware of that, but based on the legal opinion that I got, it will not be happening with grilling going forward. Moving on into the superintendent's report. Lucas, did you want to say something? I'm sorry. The liability for students to be grilling on school property. If you had a responsible adult who was willing to do that, that could be a possibility, but that did not happen. So that is what one of the issues is.
I know it was done a few years ago, but my understanding was it was the grilling was done by the district. I'm just, that's what I, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but that's what I was told. Is that here? Anybody else knows? Okay, so, so then it was done, but it was done by an adult and actually it was done by the administrator, so.
Good. Hearing no other comments, we will move forward with the superintendent's report. Use your mic, is that okay? Yes, you could be right there.
Okay, this is Francine Boss speaking. Correspondence are self-explanatory. With the need for a motion to occur for item eleven point one point one point seven. Well, it's really eleven point one point one, all of it. Regarding acknowledging my correspondence for policy twenty one thirty one.
Uh, Navy Air make wish to vote to acknowledge the superintendent's correspondence for policy twenty one thirty one. Administration Superintendent of Schools as presented. Steve, a second.
Any questions? All those in favor? I opposed abstained.
Uh, next would be correspondence to, uh, the superintendent or to the Board of Education. That is self-explanatory. Then section eleven two is reports. We don't have any general reports, but we do have our June administrator reports. And as I pointed out earlier in the meeting, under our school climate report, we also have our district goals report, which was reported out during the achievement committee meeting. We also have the Thomaston Public Schools New Certified Staff Mentor Program, which there had been questions about, uh, at a former meeting and, uh, is being provided here so that the Board has a full plan in front of them. Um, I ask that the Board of Education vote to accept and approve the new certified staff mentor program document as presented.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the Thomaston Public School.
Did anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
Oh, okay. Can I just put in a comment about this and then I'll answer your question there? I want to be clear that the word new is not referencing the report, the, um, plan being new, the program being new. It means the staff. So if you are a new staff member, that's the title of this program. So all new staff members, not a new program. Okay? Just wanted to make that clear. It's, uh, both. We had had a grant and some funds were used this year for that position. And so we're trying to continue that position into next year as well, but we don't have the grant anymore. We had a grant for that position.
Anything else? All those in favor? I opposed abstain. Thank you.
The next item under my report is the Thomaston Public Schools Staff Handbook. I'd like to first acknowledge that this handbook has been updated. It used to be called simply the Faculty Handbook, but it's been expanded to all staff. And it's been through the effort of Mr. Becca, our assistant principal at the high school. I ask that the Board accept and approve the Staff Handbook as presented.
Our vote to accept and approve the twenty twenty five twenty handbook. Maybe a second.
Um, so in reviewing the staff handbook under the, um, page nine of the, um, handbook in regards to the, um, amount of time that late work can be handed in, it says ten days. That needs to be modified to be five days to, um, match the student handbook. So if we could add that as our revision to that book. Otherwise.
So we should amend the motion to include that modification because it was discussed in, in policy today. And the assistant principal has already been notified of that change. In fact, I think he's already made it.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six Thomaston Public Schools Staff Handbook with the revision.
Nobody else has any comments or corrections? All those in favor? I opposed abstain. Thank you.
Before I go to the next item, I do want to apologize to Jennifer Price, who's not here tonight. Um, I did not acknowledge that she was the author of the new staff mentor program document. Sorry, I neglected to mention that. Uh, going on to the next document, which is the Thomaston Public Schools Parent Student Handbook, which is updated annually. Um, and also, uh, the work of our assistant principal, Mr. Becca. I ask that the Board of Education vote to accept and approve the Parent Student Handbook as presented tonight.
Navy Air make motion to accept and approve the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six Public Schools Parent Student. Steve Carr second.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? I opposed abstain.
The next item on the agenda under my report is the twenty five twenty six Thomaston Public Schools All Hazards School Security and Safety Plan. Before asking you to vote to accept and approve this, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Michael Watson, who's our safety coordinator for the district, who updated this plan for us. There are two components to this plan, a public facing component and a non-public facing component. What you are voting on today is the part that we can share with the public because the non-public facing components are, um, part of a state rule where we would share it with staff because it's how we implement the plan and that should not be exposed to the public. So what you're approving tonight is the plan as it's written without the staff only components, but they are there.
Uh, Navy Air vote to accept and approve the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six Thomaston Public. Uh, All Hazard School Security and Safety Plan as presented. Steve Carr second.
And I have a correction that needs to be made to this one as well because I am still listed as the parent representative for the high school safety committee. And since I no longer have a child in the building, I cannot fulfill that role. And, um, Mrs. Daniela Ulet, um, is listed on there as an ambulance, uh, volunteer ambulance representative, but also as a parent representative. Uh, she can be on as a volunteer ambulance representative, but she no longer has a child in the school either, so she cannot be a parent representative. So if we could amend the motion to make those corrections, please. That we need, we have to remove the two people that are listed and find a new parent representative who can remain nameless for right now. Daniela Ulet.
Our vote to accept and approve the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six Thomaston Public Schools All Hazard School Security and Safety Plus Plan correcting with the correction of removing Daniela Ulet and Roxy Fainer from, from the sorry, from, from the plan. Navy Air a second.
Just to clarify, we're removing us as parent representatives from the plan. Daniela is allowed to remain as the ambulance corps volunteer representative. All those in favor?
I opposed abstain. Thank you.
The next item under my report is the School Climate Coordinator Job Description. Uh, periodically, the state, uh, legislates what this position should have for responsibilities and duties. This now updates that position in our district through this job description. So I ask the Board approve the School Climate Coordinator Job Description as presented.
Their concerns?
Uh, Sarah E. Thea, I have a question. Um, I was just wondering why, um, we're making this a new stipend. Um, especially with the referendums that we're going through. I, I feel like it's, uh, fiscally irresponsible.
Sarah, the new responsibilities are far more reaching and deep than we have had before with the School Climate Coordinator. So they have to give a great deal of time to this role. And without hiring someone full-time, which some of the larger districts do, having a stipend is more fiscally responsible so that we can have the person doing it as part of their role in doing something else. So that's why the stipend was added because the role has changed so drastically in the law.
I did do some researching and that other districts have had like administrators or other people take on the role. So that's what I was just trying to put out there.
Typically has been in the past, the assistant principal. Uh, going back twelve years it had been. But we've been moving it to people that were more available to do this job. And with this new responsibility, we offered it to anyone in the union that was willing to take it.
Is that Sarah here again? Is that going to take away from their responsibilities elsewhere?
Because it's a stipend, it should not happen during their workday. The, the work that they do should not happen during the workday. There may be times where they have to have a meeting after school where they might have been having some overlap, but that's not a typical thing because they hold those meetings outside of regular faculty meeting days.
I just, my opinion is out there, Sarah here. Um, I just feel that with our population of students of where it is, I just feel like this is a fiscally irresponsible move and that, um, I'll be voting no.
It had been yes in the past, yes, and it still is, yes. So it's an additional, it's additional funds put aside for an administrator to manage this job. These responsibilities.
Uh, just to be clear. Um, just to be clear, now it's connected. Are we vote, we're voting on a job description or the actual point of that?
You're voting on a job description that is in alignment with Connecticut general statutes that indicate that there is a higher level of responsibility with this position than there ever has been before. It's very time consuming now. There are going to be more reports that have to be made to the state. They are going to have to be the ones that put out the, um, school climate data and gather it and report that to the state in comparison to others. So while I was able to, uh, get some of these responsibilities for free, uh, for example, the school climate survey, we no longer pay for. The money that we used to put into a school climate survey is going into this stipend. It's a very small stipend, but like I said, we've gotten everything else that we could down to zero, which is the major school climate data collection survey.
How much is the stipend for this position?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that for you and I don't have my cell on me. I can't, I can't pull it up quickly.
Is it like a thousand dollars, two thou, like?
I would say it would be fair to say somewhere between one and two. Cause that's our typical stipend range.
Like, to be clear, is.
Talk loudly. Maybe put on, yeah, one that's farther away.
Yeah, trade.
Yeah, I, I don't want to co-comment on the stipend because I really don't have that number in my head. So I don't want to be pressed for that number because I don't feel comfortable giving it because I'm not. I don't have that in my head.
I just feel like it's, we need to know the amount, especially if we go through another referendum and have more cuts. Unfortunately, we're going to, if we're cutting closer to the children and we have this stipend that we voted on, I just, I feel like it's irresponsible of us.
Well, you're not voting on the stipend tonight though, Sarah, and the
But you're voting on the position. So can we table this until we have the amount of the stipend?
I will go and get the amount of the stipend right now.
We are pausing for a moment while the superintendent gets that figure for us. Thank you for your patience.
Hello. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, M, O, P, Q, R, S, T, V, W, X, Y, Z.
Here's your Thomas to educate.
Yeah. Great. Let's see. I think it's a little, it's definitely better because this one before wasn't working well.
That could work. There we go.
I think this one's down and yours is up. Like I think if they're both in the same.
Okay, everybody, we're, we're back in session here now. Thank you for your patience, Mrs. Cos.
According to the email thread regarding this stipend, no stipend, no new stipend was going to be set until this job description was approved. Because of the extra work. So once the board approves this job description, then we can negotiate, or I should say, I can negotiate with the respective union. What the new stipend would be. Stipend was very low going back 10 years ago was somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18, $1,800, depending on what year you're looking at. We, no, I'll, I'll explain it this way. By law, we have to have a school climate coordinator, no matter what. If we don't have a job description, then we're being grossly irresponsible by putting someone in a job when they don't know their responsibilities. I have no problem with negotiating what a stipend would be. And if the board is worried, as Sarah was saying, if she thinks that it's irresponsible to pay anyone any dollar amount. I don't think that's really what she's saying. She just wants to be careful, I hope, that what we pay is not exorbitant. So if the board would like to guide me this evening, then when I go into negotiations for this particular job, I can say we cannot exceed this dollar amount. And then the MOA will reflect that. You can do it separately, or you can amend this motion to include the up to amount.
Speak there. So this is a state unfunded mandate.
Yes, it is a state unfunded mandate. You are correct.
Okay.
One of the many, Nathan.
And of the, of the, well, or over 1,400 that are affecting the town.
Yes.
And.
And to ask a teacher or an administrator to do additional duties requires negotiating some type of pay for that extra work.
Do, do we know? I'm just personally curious. If there, if you don't have an answer for this, I'm not going to have you go get it. Is there a timeline within the legislation that this has to be implemented? Cause I know there's talks about tabling XYZ. We got to stay within the law as much as I hate the unfunded.
We need to have a school climate coordinator immediately.
Immediate.
Immediately.
Okay.
As far as what the stipend is, if we need to negotiate that stipend, say in the fall, when the people come back who would be in the role. We can always retroactively pay them for the work that they've done. But right now there is no official school climate coordinator because we don't have a stipend. We're waiting for this job description.
But we didn't have one last year.
We did, but it was a different role. It wasn't this heavy. You didn't have to report to the state. And you weren't required to attend state meetings. You weren't required to collect all this data and report back to the state. So the state changed it. We did not need a school climate coordinator last year. We had a person that we called a coordinator, but it wasn't this at all. We need the job description so that I can then go before the two unions that could potentially pick this up and say, which way are we going with this? So I'm, I'm very open to whatever concerns you might have related to this position insofar as funding goes.
Now, I really don't like unfunded mandates, so I want to change the conversation to something a little bit more positive. School climate has been brought up in a lot of our parent, student and staff surveys.
Yes.
What does this role do in more specific terms, because it seems to be a bit of a broad buzzword position to aid and address those concerns and importance.
So originally, or you mean now, Nate? Historically or now?
With the new job. This one, with this one that we're voting on in this description.
There are specific regulations that they need to follow insofar as making sure that there are a number of meetings that have to occur. Each building has to have committees. There has to be an overseer of those committees. None of these have stipends that I'm talking about, the building level. And then you have a district level committee as well. And then that person, that coordinator would be over the district level committee, making sure that all of those things get done so that they're in alignment with the law. And then there are also reports that need to be made to the state from that information, either, you know, what is happening at these meetings? Or more specifically, the data collected through our school climate surveys. Our school climate survey used to cost us a great deal of money because we would have to pay a company to do it. But the local superintendents in the Litchfield County area solicited the help of advance and they created one for us. So that we would be able to use it free of charge. So some of the expense that we had budgeted for, for a school climate survey program would be made available, all of it would be made available. For this position's stipend. So I can get that number for you, but not at this moment, not, not without Tracy sitting at her desk on Friday. So I can let you know what we saved on Pandora, on Pandora, on our school climate survey program. And how much that money is that we could put toward this stipend. And if that's still too much for the board, so be it. But I am asking the board so that I can hasten the process come August, when I'm putting, trying to put someone into this position. I would like to know what your up to amount is with or without that number that I can get to you for what we're saving by not paying a company to produce our school climate surveys. District wide position. You are correct. No stipend, no stipend. Because those can happen during the school, those meetings can happen during the school day. The state has meetings during the workday of the person that has to abandon their job to go do those state meetings. I don't think, I don't know, Tanya. Yeah, I don't know. I don't even know if they're regionalizing like they do with safety. They might. I don't even know. It may be one giant meeting. It may be regionals like we do with our safety committee. But then they also have to do all of, not just the data collection, but the processing. So we have a lot of information that they need to produce and send to the state to prove that the climate specialists exist, who they are, who's on the committee, if we have a district wide committee, who they are, how often do they meet? And they have to make sure that we meet those mandates. So we need someone in the role that's going to make sure that it gets done, whether it's an administrator or a teacher. So if we can have an up to number so that I can satisfy the board when I go to negotiate, I, that would be my pleasure. To be able to, to bring that to the unions, to let them know what the board's expectations are for this. In this job description? Because they have a school climate coordinator stipend? No, not right now. That's active. It would go into the administrator's contract. Yes, because we would be putting it into an administrator. My goal is to put it into the administrator's contract. So it's not in there yet. We would write an MOA memorandum of agreement with the stipend dollar amount, hence the statement in accordance with the contract. So there is nothing in there now. It is mandated by the state.
Like business, that's what you're going to go to. I mean, it's just that simple.
Yes.
Said it's between 15, let's say 15 or 12. I mean, you gotta do something. So I'm going to say 15.
Okay.
I know. And that's what they're going to go to. Maybe the state wants us to do it. So whether we vote on it, that's going to go through which negotiates after. What are we going to do? We have to do something. Discuss it all again.
Is there any more discussion regarding this matter? Okay. All those in favor of approving the job description?
I.
Opposed? Sarah, you're opposed. Anybody else? Abstain? Nathan Veris abstaining? Okay. Do we want to make another motion regarding this? Sorry, I didn't hear that. No, that was me. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Thank you. Moving forward.
There are no residency items, no student discipline items, no homeschooling items to report. We have our June enrollment report, but that is also coupled with our spring enrollment projection. We get these twice a year. So this is our last one this year.
I didn't realize they were leaving. So all right. Bye, Megan. We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you for your service to the board. Night, gentlemen. We'll see you in the fall. In the fall. Really summer, but fall technically.
Under personnel, we have a new hire. No transfers or new assignments, reassignments. We have three resignations. And we have a retirement. No terminations or non renewals. And we have five stipends. These are all associated with the new responsibilities of the 504 coordinator. And for clarification, there is one stipend per school. And if there's more than one person at that school, they are splitting the stipend. I ask the board acknowledge my notification of personnel as presented.
Steve Carr vote to acknowledge the superintendent's notification of personnel, specifically new hires, transfers, new assignments, reassignments, resignations, retirements, terminations, non renewals, stipends per policy 41, 12, 42, 12, personnel certified, non certified appointment and conditions of employment as presented.
Nate, you're a second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Never mind.
Got to be faster. Any opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
Finishing up my report, there is no, are there no new requests for family medical leave? We have no new interns or student teachers coming into the district at this time. We do have an out of state field trip that requires the board's approval. I ask that the board accept and approve the Washington DC and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania field trip for grade eight, March 31, 2026 through April 3, 2026, as presented.
Steve, our vote to accept approve the Washington DC and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania field trip, grade eight, March 31, 2026, April 3, 2026, as presented.
Nate, you're a second.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you. Oh, everybody else? Oppose? Abstain? Thank you.
And my report concludes with no new requests for sales, disposal of books, equipment or supplies.
Thank you. So as we have already heard from our committee reports, as we amended the agenda to move those. At this time, we are going to work on establishing our educational goals for the 25, 26 school year. So in the documents you received, we have our strategic plan and we have the suggested proposals for goals that we can set for both ourselves and the superintendent. We also have our assessment update.
Steve Carr vote to establish the board of education goals for the 2025, 2026 school year as specified.
Nate, you're a second.
So I'm hoping you all had a chance to look at our proposed options. Or you had time to think about what you wanted to do on your own, Nate?
I. Well, disclosure, I did not write any of this here because I was very, very happy and impressed with the ones that were written, how they were structured, SMART goals. We expect that out of students. We should expect that as board and our superintendent. So I was very happy.
Thank you, Nate. So who wants to do what? Cause I feel four is too ambitious.
I, I presented the four as options for the board. I did not expect that the board would adopt four. But I, taking the data, I gave a variety so that they would spark conversation.
Thank you. Well, I will start it off. I think we should do goal number one to continue our work on ELA. Um, cause we have made some good progress with that. And I also think goal number two should be our second goal because of the feedback we have gotten regarding communication to and from parents and the board. But that is just my opinion. Please take it.
I also like one and two, Roxy, right? When I read it, those were the two I picked. I was.
Just.
Agree.
Question on the ELA improvement, the scores, are they, do we find a option to monitor before, what, don't they come out like in July or sort of June? We were trying to identify something that could be previewed earlier.
Yes. So if you look at the SMART breakdown for the superintendent's complimentary goal. You can see in bullet number three, under achievable, we're going to use Amplify, which is what we're using now for ELA. Um, and that will be along with other with other types of testing that we do locally. We'll be able to get that information for our June next year. But we'll never be able to get the state information before July. They just don't share it with us before July. So what we intend to do is come the fall, when we have that information in July, when we reconvene in August, we'll have an update. Cause maybe we want to tweak the SMART goal percentage because we are looking at. Because we are looking at a state goal. So maybe we want to be more or less of a percentage based on what we have here.
So to be clear, the state makes us spend a bunch of money on stuff and can't even get us our scores in time for us to plan appropriately for next year.
You are clear, sir.
Thank you.
And the state tests are given in March with a trickle into May. So yes, there could be, depending on which test you're talking about, it could be difficult, but I want to remind the board that they're all done electronically. So it really is no longer a hindrance to get. I, I don't understand why they don't get us the information in a timely manner.
No one does.
Is, do we still utilize the iReady or those types of programs?
So those will be the other assessments that we have at our fingertips for next year.
With, is there programs that could be done like the first part of the year as far as establishing like a starting point?
We have pre, yes, we have, we have multiple times that we test with our district testing so that we can get a baseline and we can show progress.
I think it's the right, like.
And we can view those or maybe set up a schedule to be able to utilize those for review?
You mean as more in real time? Is that what you mean, Steve?
Correct.
So we can hold our achievement committee meetings every time we complete one of those assessments so that you'll have that data as soon as we have it.
Which we normally do.
Typically, yes.
Anybody else have thoughts on these goals options?
And I do want to remind the board that our curriculum director did want to be here tonight, knowing that we were setting goals and knowing that ELA could be one of the goals we continue. But tonight is her son's graduation. So I want to be clear why she's not here.
She provided us information beforehand though, too.
See, she certainly did.
So she is absent. Is that correct?
Wow. She's not mailing. She might be grilling though.
Okay, let's get back to our motion. Okay, I think we should formally state what these goals are. Or just clarify that the, because you, you're just saying what we're, our goals are and now you're going to specify.
Board of Education goals for the 2025, 2026 school year with as goal one and two.
Nate, you're a second.
May I ask a clarifying question? I don't want to make the assumption. That's what I was going to ask. Yes. Yes.
Yes, with that, yes, with that amendment clarification, to be inclusive of the superintendent's goals.
Nate, you're a second.
Include the superintendent's goals of goal one and goal two.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So we kind of rolled the superintendent goals into that motion. So we are all set with that. So if I could have a motion to enter executive session inviting the superintendent of schools.
Our vote to enter into executive session for the purpose to discuss the extension of the contract for superintendent of schools, inviting Francine Cos.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending our meeting and have a good night.